Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Rossi, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to call this regular meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mike Florio.
Here.
Ellen Dolgren.
Yeah.
Dylan Walter.
Here.
Jay Mandel.
Here.
Zach Ford.
Here.
Ed Alvarino.
Present.
Chancy Latieri.
Here.
Will Clark.
Here.
Robert Forson.
Here.
Brian Pellegrini.
Yeah.
Mike Rossi.
Here. Um, all our regular members are here, so I don't have, I don't have anybody to see. According to my notes, Bob, you're up next when I do see somebody, and then it's Brian and then Susan. So that's just, just to keep that in track.
Well, why don't you keep that track?
Anyway. Well, I, I like to be fair about it, that's all. The, uh, that's my only comment, so that'll go on to minutes. Uh, review and approval of the April 70 minutes.
Salute.
Okay.
I have an issue on it.
Okay.
Under seating, it lists, um, Ellen and Susan, and didn't list Chancy, who arrived later, chose her arrival later, but didn't list her as not being there in the beginning. But then under the review of the minutes in the previous meeting, it listed Ellen as abstaining. You couldn't have abstained because she wasn't here.
Okay.
So that should be corrected.
So that was from the March minutes?
It's the April.
April minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying. Okay. Okay. With those, uh, notes, is there any, uh, further discussion? Two second, was it you? Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
I am very abstaining this time because I wasn't here last.
There you go. Uh, was there anybody opposed? Okay. Okay. Um, we have our next item is the public hearing. Uh, Ellen, will you please read the legal notice for it?
Yes, the town of Clinton, the town of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 12th, 2025, at 7:00 PM to consider the filing. E Z C dash twenty-five dash four, special exception to construct an additional twenty-four unit important building pursuant to section twenty-seven point one point one four of the Clinton zoning regulations, planned residential development pursuant to CGS eight thirty G, at five Liberty Place, map fifty-three, block fifty-four, lot fourteen, zone R sixty, the applicant, C L A Engineers, Inc. E Z C twenty-five dash twenty-five dash five, special exception for coffee tea house pursuant to section twenty-seven point two point thirty-one A of the Clinton zoning regulations, one thirty East Main Street, map sixty-eight, block sixty-five, lot eight, zone East Main Village District. Applicant Heather Wright. E Z C twenty dash twenty-five dash seven, special exception and coastal site plan to permit a liquor store pursuant to section twenty-seven point two point two six of the Clinton zoning regulations, add additional uses including retail and fourteen residential units pursuant to CGC Connecticut statutes eight three G at three twenty-seven East Main Street, map eighty-five, lot sixty-nine, block one twenty-one, zone one, zone B four. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. The applications correspond and survey will be public inspection at HTTPS colon slash slash ClintonCT dot portal dot opendub dot com slash records slash two clear at least eight nine. Anyone requiring special combination to participate in the meeting, in the public meeting, can contact the line use office at eight six zero six six nine six one three three. Michael Rossi, Chairman, Town of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, our first one item there, um, E Z C twenty-five dash four, uh, has been withdrawn, so we can go past that to item B, which is Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash five, special exception for coffee tea health um, at one thirty East Main Street. And this is, uh, Heather Wright. Is there an agent or applicant who would like to speak first?
If desirable, I did bring the slides just to kind of show a little bit about my business. I'm happy to present those, or I can not if it's a little easier.
To a certain extent, this is mainly a change of use, so I'm not so worried about the slides. I would like to hear the change of views unless anybody has an actual, you know, different opinion. Okay, go ahead. Just speak up for the microphone.
Here, okay?
Yeah.
All right, awesome. So, uh, my name is Heather Wright. I'm the owner of Tea and Tarot, the magical hypocrisy in Madison, Connecticut, and soon to be Clinton. Um, currently, the shop that I have in Madison, we actually, uh, make our own products there, so I serve different types of herbal tea and wellness goods, as well as curated products for other small businesses, especially minority women and thorough business. Uh, we offer different types of esoteric services as well. Um, and we host gatherings for like-minded individuals in that space. Um, we have, uh, found that being there for the last five years, that the community really enjoyed having us there, and we've had a really, um, wonderful success over there. So we opted to expand, and I found one thirty East Main Street, uh, which is a perfect building for what we are trying to craft. We want to be able to grow a little bit. Um, the current building that I'm in is actually also a three hundred year old house, and so I was really excited to find another, uh, venue that fit the aesthetic of what I'm trying to do for my brand. Um, the house is about, uh, three hundred years as well, uh, and one thirty East Main. Uh, so my intention is to keep the aesthetic of the beautiful house intact. I don't want to alter it in any significant way. I am looking to add a small customer-facing kitchen to make our dry goods. Um, we intend to have snacks and goodies there as well, but we're primarily going to have them prepackaged and made off-site. We're not going to use the kitchen for cooking or anything like that. Uh, my intention as we expand is to actually have a tea space, so we are crafting a small tea room in this place. We also have a boutique. We'll also help host classes and, um, workshops for folks as well. So I'm trying to expand a little bit bigger than the space we have now into this building where we want to have a, a tea room. And so, um, I also wanted to add that as far as the tea room goes, we are planning to have about four or five tables with about ten to twelve seats. It's a really cute little space, but we want to make sure that we honor it, so we don't want to alter it too much. We just want to keep it, uh, small and quaint. We, uh, parking situation, we have about ten to twelve parking spots that are available. The building is actually shared use, so there's two other folks that are, uh, running, uh, offices in a swing of the building. So we'll be sharing the parking lot with them as well. Uh, it was already approved for the, the health approval. Uh, we assessed the leaching system and the soil test to make sure that the sold house could handle the volume of flow of people that we're going to have in that building. Uh, and my signage was also approved.
Dylan, you have a question?
Um, is, so you're expanding, so you have the shop in Madison and Clinton?
Yes.
Oh, wow, thanks.
Yeah.
I did notice on one of the layout plans, uh, can you go into a little more detail as to what, which craft supplies are?
Absolutely. Uh, so we consider ourselves a non-denominational space. Uh, we primarily, uh, have offerings for all sorts of spiritual, um, expression. Uh, so a lot of the stuff that we offer now are books, tarot decks, sometimes it's, um, burning dishes, all sorts of incense, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
I like eyes of doom very.
No, no, we do have mugwort, but it, it's a plant that grows everywhere.
As far as the kitchen goes.
Yes.
Um, I assume it's primarily then for, uh, cleaning up and, uh, taking care of those types of items since you're not going to be cooking?
It's for tea production, so most of the tea that we make is our own. Um, they're all original blends, and so we need a place to mix dry goods and then wash the dishes, so we will have to, um, sanitize and clean anything that anyone uses, so we'll be serving mostly teacups, um, and anything that we use to make our teas. Welcome to wash. So we are getting commercial grade, um, dishwasher, commercial grade countertops, commercial grade, um, uh, refrigerator, everything should be sinks, commercial grade sinks as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, question, go ahead.
I've got a question, um, just one thing that should be corrected. Under your statement of use in the application, it states, it states zero permanent seats where there are going to be, you said ten to twelve seats, so that should be corrected in the record. But my concern is really is with the parking. Now, you said you have, there are ten to twelve total spaces there, and by the parking for your services alone are required ten spaces. But it doesn't address the classrooms in the second floor where there's, um, you know, a total of, what, I think there were eleven seats up there or something like that?
Luckily, our classroom will be active after hours, so we only host classes after the shop is closed. So the shop, the tea room won't be open while the classroom is open, so we shouldn't have too much overlap.
Okay. Kathy, do we have any, is that a concern? Okay.
No.
Okay. And what about the two existing uses? What about their parking?
Oh, we, we went through the parking calculations with her, and actually Abby did too. It's in our staff report. Um, so we're not, we're not concerned.
No, what you're saying is you have ten spots in addition to what the other two places.
Yeah, and Abby included in her report too. There's four spaces for food service seating, three spaces for queuing near the counter, three spaces to accommodate the retail. The parking plan indicates eleven spaces. The applicant intends to maintain the existing parking surface.
Yes, and that's my question, because I read that, and per uses, how per ten of the spaces, there's two additional uses there is my question, is my concern.
The way I had read it was that they had the, they didn't count those in the lot. It was a lot bigger than ten spaces?
How many did you end up with, Heather? Because I know you worked with Abby on that, and then with Richard, truly.
I actually, I don't know if Richard confirmed that, but I believe that we have the ten spaces total.
Right, that's what shows here, but there are, but you mentioned that the lot has twelve spaces in total.
So there's a section that we can, we can kind of bridge out if we needed to, but yeah, as far as what's actually paged, there's only.
Yeah. That's my concern. We seem to be a little short on the parking spaces. Do we have a provision within our part requirements for a waiver?
Well, we have the minimum and we have the max. Um, yeah, we, we do. I'll, I'll pull it up.
Looks like Abby wrote in there though, um, eleven, or see the, uh, three spaces to accommodate the sixteen eighty-four square feet of retail and existing office spaces on site, so it's three spaces. It seems included.
It does say that existing office spaces.
It says, yeah, the three spaces to accommodate the sixteen eighty-four square feet of retail space and existing office spaces on site.
Yeah, okay, I missed that part.
It's on page, yeah, too.
Yeah. Um, and just a comment, it's up to you, but I noticed that you're, you have your hours of cooperation and you don't have Monday and Tuesday on there. For your own benefit, you might want to modify your application to include them, because it's easier to have them in the original approval as opposed to coming back to get it again, so it's up to you, obviously, if you want to.
I understand. I, I actually still work a full-time job, um, so the weekends tend to be better performing for us, and so, uh, for the last five years, I've been Thursday through Sunday. Uh, we usually extend it around the holidays, but, um, it's something I will definitely consider.
Yeah, it's not, um, that doesn't
Doesn't make you.
Require you to be open seven days a week, but to have yourself already approved for it gives you more freedom.
In other words, if you want to be open additional days in the holidays, instead of asking for a special approval, then you can either modify your application now and say you'd like to be open seven days a week, and we can include that in our deliberations, and that way you have that option. Wrote it out there, give me a second.
Thank you.
Otherwise, you need a modification to special exception.
Okay, all right, I can adjust that.
You don't have to use it, but you have the approval.
Right, so we can consider that now if you want to amend your application to seven days a week.
Yes, please, that would be great.
Okay, Jesse, keep that in mind. You're going to get to make a move. Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, just on the executive summary, we're going to be reading from that. We need to change it from one thirty High Street to one thirty Main Street.
Yeah, in the first sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is one thirty High Street.
I didn't know this, but of course.
It said it's the first sentence.
Yeah, I stayed up for it.
That, that's the summary, just, I think her part is in the mode, and it does say it's being.
Okay, any other questions from the commission before I, uh, allow a public comment? Okay, at this time, uh, we would welcome, uh, comments from the public, uh, either for or against or neutral on this application. If you're online and you want to say something, please use the chat to sign, let us know you're, want to speak. Um, again, we will, uh, if there's anybody here who would like to speak, um, for this, please, uh, smell. Go ahead, introduce yourself.
My name is Bob Wright, and I'm the proud father of Heather, and she has a wonderful shop in Madison. And to the extent that's allowable in your policy and process, I would really encourage you to go take a shot in Madison. It's an absolute wonderful place. It's welcoming. It's just the place that you take your girlfriend, your mother, your wife, anyone. It's just a wonderful place. And I think it would be a real positive addition for the community of Clinton, and I ask that you give a serious consideration, allow her.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to?
Is there someone in the chat?
No.
We'll wait just to open it, just in case.
Okay, so, um, is there any final questions from the commission? In that case, I would, uh, consider a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second over there with Eddie, okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Close. Danny, motion carries. Thank you. I lost my agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. Um, item C, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash seven, special exception in coastal site plan permit a liquor store pursuant to, uh, section twenty-seven point two point twenty-six. This, when they don't have their, um, uh,
Always word.
Um.
Yeah. Help, help office, uh, documentation, so we're going to just o- open the public hearing and, uh, continue it. We aren't going to actually do anything else, so the public hearing is now open. I would like a motion to continue the public hearing.
Uh, you wish the motion to continue.
To next one.
Public hearing.
Okay. We will be till the June regular. Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Close. Danny, motion carry. We have staff reports next, but I'm thinking we'll deal with those as we get to the individual applications, so we can, we, you know, all of them are specific for applications. Next is new business. I'd like to ask someone to make a motion to add, uh, two items to the new business. The first one is for Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash twelve at eight Liberty, I'm sorry, at seven Liberty Place. This is an eight thirty G for Stevenson and Associates, and I'll ask them to give us a product, a description in a second. The other one is Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash thirteen, which is the cam for the same site. Um, this is a, um, you know, that, that's all I need to say right now. Are there any, there, there a motion to add items D and E to this?
All right, I'll. So.
We got a moving second over here, okay. So that's in there. Thank you.
Like, um, I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. Should we add those? Should we ask that they be added to the, to the agenda, or just bring them up afterwards? A couple of suggestions for amending our regulations.
Well, the way that it's set right now, we have to add it to the agenda, and we have to have a two-thirds vote to do it. Okay, now, we could amend our bylaws to change how we do that.
Then we can't, but you need to do that at two separate meetings and, uh,
Right, yes, you would.
Or.
Right, but right now, that's the way it's.
Okay, so, so. So I'd like to at least discuss these two proposals at some point, and I don't know which, when the appropriate time to discuss that is.
What, the?
No, 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 not these. This is two separate issues, and I I think that first of all, we should strike, uh, section twenty-one, which is our floating zone regulation. Secondly, I think we need to amend the definition.
We, we should spring these up.
That's why I'm asking when you.
Yeah, let, let's bring them up in discussion after, um, add this to new business. Uh, can we get an F to bring up discussion, please? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, so discussion of, uh, regulation changes, um, this is new, this is new business, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Um, let's see. Six A was with, um, is Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, twenty-five dash eight site plan application um, pursuant to, uh, Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty G at ninety-two High Street. There's Thomas A. Stevenson and Associates. We can receive this tonight, uh, and then it'll need to be, um, scheduled for public hearing.
I'm both received P Z C twenty-five.
Oh, wait, this is a site plan. We, we don't have to schedule public, and we can actually just.
Yes, right.
Okay, I say that, sorry.
Don't worry. So Tony Baldwin, agent for the applicant.
Oh, wait, okay.
Yeah, I moved to the meeting twenty-five, uh, P Z C twenty-five dash eight site plan, uh, at, for ninety-two High Street.
You have a second?
I'm seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Um, go ahead.
Tony Baldwin, agent for the applicant at ninety-two High Street. Um, so the, the site is in our twenty zone. It's, uh, thirty-two thousand four hundred twenty-five square feet or point seven four acres. Um, this was originally approved as a two-family site, uh, which is well under the zoning regulations. Um, so the, the owner wanted to come forward as an eight thirty G application, uh, under affordable housing. So some of the requirements, um, to turn this into the six units would be, um, six parking spaces, which we've provided. We have six parking spaces on site with additional four, um, because there's a garage. There's a garage under on this spot, in this spot, so there's actually ten spaces on site. Um, and when you do an eight thirty G application, you have to write all your own zoning regulations outside of the requirements, or outside of the, um, six units. Everything else has remained the same. All the setbacks are the same height requirements, uh, et cetera. Um, so we also have stormwater, so we're catching all the runoff, uh, in this area here. Um, the Connecticut Health District has approved the septic back in July, or excuse me, December third of twenty twenty-four. And I think, uh, that's pretty much it. I know you guys are going to ask, so uh, on the first floor, the first unit, which is this unit, uh, will be the, will be one of the portable ones. And on the second floor, um, this unit versus cut off, but it is a mirror image of this unit, so that'd be the second that it does. But these would be, uh, for forty years under, you know, current regulations.
So one of the larger and one of the smaller.
Yeah, so, uh, most of, all, uh, four of the units are seven hundred and eighty square feet, and then the two end units are four hundred square feet. Um, any questions?
Is there a question, though?
I really don't have any questions. We went through this discussion, the previous one, so I think you've covered the bases and come back with the straightforward eight thirty G.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, that's what I.
I don't think there's any outstanding issues that I'm aware of. Okay.
Do you have anything, do you have any input on the design of it?
No, no, no.
No, I mean, it's right next to all those historic homes. They would need architectural features and so. And then you're just going to have. Just nothing we could do to.
No.
It's not historical. It's not designated, it's a historic district in Clinton, if I'm not mistaken.
So viewpoint.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Nikki, let me ask if there's anyone from, uh, the public that would like to speak or ask questions about, or direct questions to us about this application?
Fuck everybody, there's nobody there.
Everybody else?
No, I'm not, Toby.
Okay. Hearing none, um, I would, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, close, not a public hearing, but.
Not a public hearing, yeah.
I, I would entertain a motion to move on.
I guess we've received it. We don't have to, we can just.
Been a while since I've had a straight site plan. You gotta make it easy. Uh, okay. Item C. Okay, we'll move on to item C, which is Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash ten.
Does this go, is this, go on to a public hearing?
No.
No, that one doesn't.
No, it's eight thirty G, there's none. No, it's one of the.
It's like a site plan.
Right, okay.
So.
We have to play, is that a commission? Don't we have to, do we have to approve it and deny the site plan now?
I was going to do that under, on here, it's under old business.
Okay, fine.
That's where.
Yeah.
It's under old business. It's, um.
I don't see it either.
It should have been under old business. I guess maybe they just.
Oh, no, that's good. We can do it right now.
Yeah.
That's it. Let's take care of it right now. Um, make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve E Z C twenty-five dash eight, the site plan application pursuant to Connecticut General Statute eight thirty G at ninety-two High Street, map forty-four, block twenty-six, lot eight A, zone R twenty. The applicant has met the, the requirements under eight thirty G, therefore, I see no reason to deny the application, so therefore, I'd make a motion to approve it.
And I second that motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Close. Danny. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, we're. So C, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash ten, special exception.
Up there's B, B, which is the.
Oh, did I skip P?
Yeah.
Are you ready to get home, Michael?
Hi.
Okay. Twenty-five dash nine, site plan for home occupations, tier two massage therapy pursuant to section twenty-seven dash point one point eleven B um, at seventy-three Fairydale Road. The applicant is Lauren Smith. We are simply receiving this tonight. Um, unless somebody's here for it.
No, Lauren's not here.
Okay, so we're just going to receive this tonight? Okay, can I get a motion to receive? I'll make a motion.
We're done.
That's every person, all right.
Oh, you're like, oh, give it another. Okay.
Ten boxes, slow down.
All those in favor?
All right.
Just ready to receive.
Yeah. Oppose. Danny, motion carry. Uh, since there's not an applicant here, we'll move on with this. Okay. Um, now I can get to C finally. All right, I was in a hurry, you know. Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash ten, special exception modification um, to twenty dash oh, oh two. I had, uh, Indian River Shops, Killingworth Turnpike. Um, this is William Sweeney, and I believe this is the special exception, I know it's a special exception to allow, uh, health clinics. Okay. Uh, we can receive this and need to schedule for a public hearing for next month.
Make a motion to receive the application, P Z C twenty-five dash ten, second.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, and schedule for public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Close. Danny, motion carry. Thank you. Okay. Um, the next one is, uh, item D, Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash twelve.
Where we added.
Yes, this is the one we added.
Okay, twelve is there too, okay.
Okay, which is seven Liberty Place. It's an eight thirty G application, and the applicant is Stevenson Associates. Uh, we're going to receive, um, let's see, make sure I know what I'm doing here.
It's just, uh, uh, eight thirty G with a cam.
Yeah, this is a, this is a special exception for.
Just to say it's an eight thirty G with a cam.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no special.
Okay, so a eight thirty-three with a G, we get, um, with a cam, we need to receive it and then wait for the state for the cams. Okay, you want to give us a description of what you're doing here?
Yep, so, yeah, it's a number seven and number eleven Liberty Place, so it's two parcels at the moment. Um, so. Um so the developer is looking to uh demo the two houses, combine the properties, build two separate buildings. Uh the larger building would be number seven, which would be totaled twenty eight units. Um and then the smaller building, which would be in place at number eleven, would be twelve units. Um so. Uh that's pretty much the overall site. We've met with the fire department, made sure we ironed all that out so they can get around the buildings and everything. Um one of the issues is we do have to extend the water main. Uh we are capturing all the surface runoff. Um make sure we kind of aligned with um number five Liberty Place that's coming in for also an eight thirty G application, so they all kind of drive together. Uh we have more than enough parking on site and. Oh, and we do have to do design uh review board, so prosthetics.
And health.
And health.
And then cam.
Okay, so um what we'll be doing tonight is just receiving this. Um when you you'll come back in with all the plans and go over that with us in the next minute, probably. Hopefully you'll have the help department by then.
I hope so.
We'll see how that goes.
I wanna harass him a lot more than.
You never know how long that will take, so. Um, okay, uh let's move on to.
Motion to receive, please.
Oh, motion to receive, please.
Don't move.
All in favor? Both. Then motion carries. Okay, I'd like a. Move on to item planning and zoning commission twenty five dash thirteen. This is a cam for seven and apparently eleven Liberty Place. Um again, this is uh Stevens and Associates. And we get a motion to receive this and send the cam uh materials to the uh state. Thank you. Jay, Jay got it. I just heard it on that side. Okay, um any discussion? All those in favor? Both. Then motion carries. Okay, we're now to item uh F. Um which was discussion of um let's see, let's take these as two separate things. Your first one, what was your first concern?
My first concern is the floating zone section of our regulations. I think we've all kind of voiced opposition to the idea of floating zones. It's quite frankly, it's just, it's poor zoning. Um it doesn't really give you, doesn't give people that live in certain areas any any heads up on things and that what could be accomplished. Anything that we need to accomplish, we could do it with an overlay zone as opposed to a floating zone. So I think it's in the best interest of the town to strike section twenty one from our regulations.
And I talk to you about, yeah, I agree. Um I think.
Do you want us to send this to the regulations committee to discuss?
Um I think we.
Think we.
I think we're at a pretty good consensus. I think that this is something that we can add to the. I would like to a motion to add it to the uh public hearing process for next meeting. To simply have it being stretching that entire section.
So moved.
Make that motion. Okay.
I'll second it.
You'll second it? Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, my only comment is uh. We also asked that Abby, you know, read through the section, make sure that there are no edits required to other sections.
So I I was gonna suggest instead of doing it in June, so Abby's out of the office until May twenty seventh. The next meeting is June ninth. So if you want her to do a full review, would you be willing to move it to the July meeting?
Why don't we, why don't we put it on for the next meeting and if she has the opportunity to review, we could do with that and we can.
We can continue on.
Okay, that sounds fine. I'll I'll let her know.
Okay. Okay.
And Bo, did you have another one as well?
I did, but should we vote on this?
We need to vote on.
Okay, fine, okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Oppose. Then motion carries. Okay, well, go ahead.
Second suggestion I have is I think we should amend our our definition of bedrooms. I was looking at an application, we'll go into detail with it, but you have rooms that are clearly going to be used as a bedroom. But are listed as office, you know, home office. And when I looked, I said, this can't possibly be, and I looked at our definition and. You could see that this person could get by creatively, uh but call these home offices. As opposed to bedrooms, but there's no doubt in my mind, and I don't think anybody with any common sense would doubt that these are gonna be used. Well, I'm not talking about any specific application.
Well.
I thought a bedroom, you had to have a closet.
If you, no, if you read our application, it our definition is, I think it's any room that that isn't connected directly to a bathroom without going through a common area.
I think the health department has one definition and the assessor's office has another. The assessors is based off of if it has a closet or not, whereas the health department, it has to have a reasonable right to privacy. And based on the proximity to a bathroom.
Right.
Can we just be adding a third definition or?
If I'm, I took the definition.
I, when I filled my addition, um and they wanted, you know, make, you know, it was Tom Lane. He came in and said, we have one master bedroom, you know, one bedroom. The other one was a office and it was clearly an office because it had no closet. It just had shelves for stuff and on the walls I had the cable connections and the satellite carries.
But you could have made it a bedroom.
Our definition of a bedroom is. Our our definition of a bedroom is a private room planned and intended for sleeping, separate from, separate from other rooms by a door. Accessible to a bathroom without crossing another bedroom or living area. It's very vague.
Closet's not part of it.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we add something along the line of any room other than a kitchen or a bathroom that is not connected to the primary living area. By an opening of not less than ninety six inches shall be considered a bedroom. We're closing that loophole. You know, there's, if, you know, just calling in a, calling in an office. Doesn't make a change. I would, I would bet a million dollars if you go to these places, it's not an office, it's gonna be used as a bed.
Yeah.
A lot of people who have home offices now who have to work from home, my husband included. So when we look at homes, we need an office. We're not looking for a bedroom.
But I think in a lot of places, these are, these gets, it gets abused. So I think maybe.
Well, if we're being abusive, we have to do the due diligence to find the abuse.
You know who abuses those LLCs? People buying, buying the homes. That's who's abusing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's my concern, you know, is that septic systems are an issue, even fire department, that you know. You know, you go into a building thinking, okay, there's one bedroom with smoke filled.
Yeah.
You checked out the bedroom, it's vacant. You didn't look at the room in the back that somebody's living in, you know, and it's.
Yeah, yeah. I think this is something we need to. I don't think this is something that we can.
But Tinsia is correct, with so many people working from. I would agree with that.
No, the, the. To have it declared a bedroom or not. Um for us, in terms of things like parking and that, we need, it's important that we consider it a bedroom. Um on the other hand, when somebody buys a house and decides how they wanna organize it, they don't have to use it as a bedroom. They can use it as an office or whatever else.
Houses that are considered to have a bonus room or an office to up their septics. If we now consider those bedrooms.
No, because our regs don't adjust their septics. That's from the health department and.
So that's still gonna happen then, whether.
Right.
If we change our.
What is the big?
Well, you say you have, say you have an apartment building or.
That's different.
Well, it's not different in our regulations, that's my point.
Oh. I think I see when you say that, I'm thinking of a single family house or.
My, my bigger concern is, you know, when people build a house, they typically set it up a certain way, but my bigger concern is apartments.
Exactly. Okay, so we need to make sure then that that definition is clear. That has distinction for apartments, uh apartments over health. That has to be clear. I'm telling you, because we know abuse in this town and it's rampant. So that has to really, I mean, we really have to come down, come down on it and make, make it out.
But I, I think Mike has a good point. I think this is something that we need to fine tune in the regulations.
So I'd like a motion to uh send this uh issue to regulations. I'll second it.
I just.
We need to figure out when our regulations committee is. We'll do that under committee.
Yeah, because I know Abby right now focuses on the P O C D.
I know.
So she's, she's like, probably not, you know, gonna wanna dive into regs yet, but I just have one more item to add. It's another site plan um for, we're just received tonight for three sixteen East Main Street. It's PZC twenty five eleven for a nail salon.
Okay.
Some of these applications came in and they didn't make it down to you, so we're adding them on tonight.
I wonder where eleven. Um, do we uh have a motion to uh add this to the agenda?
To receive.
Oh, wait a second. Before we do that, uh did we get a motion to?
We did.
We got the motion to. Any discussion on that?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of the.
Uh all in favor of these.
Okay, now we can move on to uh planning and zoning commission twenty five dash eleven, nail salon, where is that? Three sixteen East Main Street. Okay, so do we have a motion to amend the, that's, that's what I was trying to do. Okay. Okay. All those in favor? Both. Then, great, motion carries. Um can you give us a, all we're doing tonight is receiving this?
Yeah.
Okay, so can I motion to receive planning and zoning commission uh twenty five dash eleven?
Don't move.
Okay, all those in favor? Alright. Carries, thank you. That was easy. Okay. Item seven, old business. We've got some easy ones here. If you go to the first item, A and second item B are both withdrawn, so we can. Move on. Uh planning and zoning commission twenty five dash five, special exception for the coffee and tea house. At um one thirty East Main Street. The public hearing was this evening and the uh app, it's closed. So it's now eligible for decision. I'd like to make a motion to. My, 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 go to the back. Go right ahead. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve planning and zoning commission twenty five dash five. Section twenty seven point two point three one.
There's a recommended motion.
Well, really. Oh, oh, okay, okay. I, I move to approve planning and zoning twenty five dash five for special exception for, for a tea house. And associated retail classroom and office. Here it is. As shown, a plan submitted. April thirtieth, twenty twenty five by applicant Heather Wright. Labelled April thirteenth. April thirtieth, twenty twenty, uh twenty twenty five, way up on one thirty. Adopted following financing back. Application, PZC twenty five dash five, it's meant to public. Notice requirements in section four of zoning regulations and and um G C P S. Eight, section eight dash seven day. Existing parking area provides sufficient parking and compliance with sections thirty three of the zoning regulation. The reuse and the preservation of existing structures originally built seventeen thirty five will maintain harmony with the surrounding properties. And assisted with the purpose of these main village district. The project is assisted with the cultural resources priorities for the village zone reference in the two thousand fifteen plan of the constitution.
And did you wanna add another condition about the seven days?
Yes, um the applicant wanted.
Oh, yeah.
Seven days a week.
Also, the uh the, we're gonna amend it, so you're gonna be open seven days. Maybe you'll see it on the back.
Thank you.
Okay, you'll have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, further discussion? All those in favor? Both. Danny, motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, um next we have planning and zoning commission uh twenty five dash seven. Um this was a public hearing on this with continued, so we can't do anything with that tonight. We're now to committee reports. So um first thing under committee reports. Is the P O C D subcommittee.
We're making great progress with the P O C D. Um we're actually starting to simultaneously still collect information and get. Uh comments from different people in different departments, but we're also starting to put together the rough draft. That should be, if I recall the discussion, should be, the rough draft might be presented to this commission uh in July.
Yeah, we're making good progress.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, you know, it's uh, it's moving along quite, you know, quite well. There's a couple of events coming up. I think they've mentioned one at the um Marina, there's a public boat launch. And there's probably gonna be another one also where they're gonna, you know, have to have the display and gather more information. But the rough draft should be available to this commission uh sometime at the end of the line.
Yeah, we, boy, we saw that the um, we're gonna have a date, the twenty eighth or something like that.
Yes.
There's a meeting set for the twenty eighth, yes, during the day. We're just not sure if it's gonna be virtual or in person because of conference room conflicts right now.
Or if, if the conferences are tied up here, could we meet at, say, the library or something like that? Sure. I just think at this point, it might be just more effective to meet in person, I think. Or the police station.
Okay, I can check those.
I think so. We should, we should look into those. I think it'd be more productive at, at this point. I think that's important.
And everybody's gonna make it. I'm, 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 I'm working. Okay, um I would like to um also under committee reports, we do need to mention the uh. Regulations committee. Um we need to figure out when the committee can meet again. Um because again, as, as noted, you know, the P O C D has really taken over a lot of that.
Yes.
I would like to hear from everybody what they think. We can do what, what's available to them and their schedules. I know for me, it's very tough because I've already pretty much got every Thursday booked. Well, that's the evening that the, the town halls open, so that's a.
You're open till seven on Thursdays.
Oh, in order to kind of move the process along. In order to kind of move the process along a little bit, could the uh regulations committee meet without Abby there to kind of. Formulate a more of a, you know, a bigger plan to send it, you know, to for review. In other words, we're not starting from scratch when Abby's available. I don't know if.
What time is the next P O C D meeting?
The next P O C D meeting is, well, it's the twenty eighth.
Yeah, well, at what time was?
Three o'clock.
Yeah, nobody, Mike, you'll be up at school. Yeah, I need to drive, I need to drive. Um, okay, that won't work. My idea there won't work.
Yeah, it might be better to wait till Abby's back, because a lot of times what she likes to do as well is look at what other towns are doing. Check with the building department for their definition, the health department. You know, there might be things that would be good.